You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 8th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the um regular meeting for the social status of African American males. It is Wednesday, May the 8th, 2024. Can we please all stand for the pledge? Mr. Pollak, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Absolutely.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I would like to apologize to those who showed up today thinking that the meeting was in the E O C room. They had a blood drive today, so we moved back over here, uh, this, this meeting only. Um, Ms. Moore, can you uh give us a roll call, please?
Stacy Bennett, President, Pastor Dennis Carroll.
The President.
Tony Cox.
Present.
Kenny Fly Senior.
Present.
Pastor Dwayne Hurt.
Present.
Pastor Robert Johnson. Mike Jones.
Present.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Willie Millsap.
Present.
No, Casey McCormick. Ray Moore, present. Nick Pollak.
Present.
Taylor Tillman. Mike Walker. And Joseph Nelson.
We have a quorum. Let's move on to the next. We have a guest speaker, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to the Vice President, uh, Mr. Millsap.
Thank you, President. Katie, could you please uh step up to the mic for us, please? Everyone, if you don't know, this month is Mental Health Month, and I reached out to the Swanson Center to give us uh some type of snapshot of the uh mental health issue in the black community. And she was very uh knowledgeable in that area, and she took my request to heed, and that's where we are today. Katie, could you please introduce yourself and your position with the Swanson Center, please?
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Katie Jezneski. I'm the Chief Clinical Officer at the Swanson Center. And the Swanson Center, for those of you who aren't aware, is the Community Mental Health Center of La Porte County. We are one of 24 community mental health centers in the state of Indiana. Uh, we are the smallest one, meaning that we cover the smallest area. We only cover one county, whereas other community mental health centers cover multiple counties and multiple catchment areas. We provide services, mental health and addiction, to individuals from the age of two on up. Um, I think our oldest client passed away recently, and she was 99 years old. So we run the gamut in terms of age range. Um, we provide child and adolescent services as well as adult. Vary from uh case management, skills training, individual therapy, psychiatric services, uh group home we have here in Michigan City for 12 individuals. And then we also uh have a semi-independent living program which houses up to 15 individuals who have a serious mental illness. Uh, so we do run the gamut uh in terms of services, which most community mental health centers do provide in the state of Indiana. So when I had talked with Mr. Millsap about uh what he expected for a presentation and what kind of information he wanted, I thought it would be important to give you some numbers, uh, so we know where we're standing at. In the United States, 13.6% of the population, which is about 45.3 million people, identify themselves as black or African American, and that was in 2021. Uh, in the 2023 population, we always do things in arrears. Um, estimates of black or African American alone in Indiana was 10.3%. And for La Porte County, 11.4%. Thank you. Uh, in the United States, 6.8 million African Americans have an identified mental illness. And only one in three African American adults with a mental illness will receive treatment. And we'll get to some of those reasons uh why in uh later on in the presentation. According to the APA, which is the American Psychiatric Association, um, their mental he- health facts for African Americans um guide, they also are less likely uh to receive uh guideline consistent care. So we have specific evidence-based treatments that we provide to individuals, and African Americans are less likely to receive those. Um, they are less frequently included in research and more likely to use emergency services or primary care rather than specific mental health services. Uh, the African American children make up 16.1% of Indiana's total ADD or ADHD population, which is Attention Deficit Disorder or Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder. Um, and although they only make up 13.1% of our population, out of that small number, 16.1% of those children are diagnosed with ADD or ADHD. Thank you. So according to the 2021 National Survey on Drug Use uh and Health, 21% of African Americans reported having a mental illness, compared to 23.9% of non-Hispanic whites. However, uh just 39% of black African or black African Americans have received mental health services compared to non-Hispanic whites at 52%. That's a pretty substantial difference in terms of individuals receiving treatment. African Americans have similar rates of substance use disorder at 17% as non-Hispanic whites, but higher rates of illicit drug use. We're looking at 24.3% versus 22.5%, which doesn't sound like a big number, but in the grand scheme of things, when we're talking about millions of people, that's a lot of individuals. And we also have a higher number of unmet treatment needs in the African American community. Thank you. There was a report that was established in November of '21 by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and it showed that suicide rates in the United States decreased by 3%. However, uh, they increased among many men of color, including African American men during that period. Suicide was the third leading cause of death among African Americans 10 to 24 years old and African men 25 to 34. White Americans are more likely to die by suicide than people of other ethnic or racial groups. According to the Health and Human Services Office of Minority Health, African American adults in the U.S. are more likely um than white adults to report persistent symptoms of emotional distress, such as sadness or feeling like everything is an effort. And African American adults living below the poverty line uh are more like than twice as likely to report serious psychological distress than those with more financial security. So let's get to a little bit more specific of Indiana facts. Of the Hoosier youth who died by suicide in 2020, 74.7% were white, 14.5% were African American, 7.2 were Hispanic, and 3.6 were Asian or Pacific Islander. Indiana belongs to a group of 12 states, which we would prefer not to belong to, um, with the highest rates of suicidal ideations, and that is referring to thoughts of suicide. In 2021, 38.7% of Hoosier students felt sad or helpless, and 12.9% seriously considered attempting suicide. So what you're seeing up here on the screens, uh, Mental Health America conducts research and compiles data surrounding a number of mental health issues. And I know it's kind of hard to see, but I wanted you just to kind of get the idea, and you can go on Mental Health America uh's website. The slide here presented illustrates information that was obtained regarding risk assessment for severe depression. And this is data that was collected from 2020 to 2023, and we remember what was happening during 2020 to 2023, right? This pandemic that hit all of us. Um, so these scores definitely have been impacted due to the pandemic. Uh, but this is showing the number of Hoosiers who completed the PHQ9, which is a depression screener. It's nine simple questions that ask you about symptoms of depression. And so there were about 178,000 Hoosiers that completed that screener. And we utilize that screener on a daily basis at the Swanson Center as well. The number of Hoosiers screened who score indicated severe depression was over 56,000 individuals, which is about 31.5%. It's hard to see, but in that little green box that says Indiana, um specifically out of those individuals that were screened, about 3,200 of those individuals identified themselves as black or African American. And 1,037 of those 3,200, um, who's, is their score of the PHQ9 indicated severe depression, which is higher than the total number of 31 uh and a half percent. They're at 32.3% for individuals in the African American community who scored high enough for severe depression. This next slide, um, this is the data specifically for La Porte County. Uh, Mr. Millsap had asked specifically to try to get some La Porte County data. I tried. This is my best effort. Um, so there were 435 individuals um who completed that, that depression screener, the PHQ9. 176 of those individuals uh indicated severe depression, which is about 40% of those responses. That what we have listed on the right-hand side is the total number scoring with severe depression per 100,000 people, and we're looking at almost 37 people per 100,000, which is about 40% of the responses that identified severe depression. For county, they don't break it down into race. They only broke it down into race in terms of state, so I unfortunately don't have that data. So I've given you the numbers, and you're like, okay, now what do I do with that, right? Um, there are a lot of factors that put African Americans at risk for mental health problems, and I feel it's extremely important to be able to identify what those are. These three words we see a lot, right? Racism, racial bias, and discrimination. These may really contribute to poor physical, but also mental health among racial and ethnic minority populations. As you all are aware, racism is the form of prejudice that generally includes negative emotional reactions to members of a specific group, acceptance of negative stereotypes, and racial discrimination against individuals. And in some cases, as we know, it leads to violence. Racial bias are those unconscious thoughts. So those thoughts that we don't think about, that we know that we don't have, they're not in the forefront of our minds. But these are also preoccupations or experiences that cause people to think and act in prejudiced ways. And then discrimination obviously refers to the differential treatment of different people by age, gender, racial, ethnic, religious, national, abilities, sexual orientation. The list goes on and on, right? And it often presents as negative, hostile, and injurious. Another factor that can lead to increased mental health rates among individuals um that identify as African American is racial profiling. African American males are disproportionately assumed to be criminals, and they are frequently stopped and searched based on the perceived notion of wrongdoing. Many individuals who have been profiled uh have developed symptoms of anxiety and post-traumatic stress. Institutional racism and social determinants of mental health. Institutional racism is a critical social determinant of health. Other social determinants include the quality of education, safe housing, gainful employment, appropriate healthcare, and a clean environment. All of these can lead to adverse health outcomes. Institutional racism is also known as systemic racism, and it's defined as policies and practices that exist throughout a whole society or organization that result in and support uh can a continued unfair advantage to a certain group or unfair or harmful treatment to others based upon race or ethnic group. Social determinants of health are the non-medical factors that influence health outcomes for both individuals and groups. These are often conditions in which people are born, in which they grow, they work, they live, they age. Uh, and there are wider set of forces and systems that shape our daily life. The three that are listed here are extremely important in terms of our discussion today. Low socioeconomic status, African Americans tend to have lower socioeconomic status than non-Hispanic whites and Asian Americans, as determined by education, income, and occupation. The low SES has been significantly associated with a higher risk for mental illness. Even when adjusted by educational level, the unemployment rate for African Americans is significantly higher than for their Caucasian counterparts. When employed, African American workers are more likely to be in the lowest paying economic sector. Understandably why this would contribute to mental health issues. Housing segregation, despite the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which made housing discrimination illegal, housing segregation continues, and this inadvertently affects access to quality education since constrained housing choices can impact health, education, and other life outcomes. And then finally, mass incarceration. African Americans are disproportionately represented at every level of the justice system. They are more likely to be arrested, imprisoned, and sentenced to harsher terms than their white counterparts. Mass incarceration not only affects the individual who is imprisoned, but also the family members who are left behind. And finally, trauma. Untreated traumatic stress has serious consequences for children, adults, and families. And on here is listed five different types of trauma that are identified that really primarily hit the African American community. Individual uh trauma is identified as African American uh who disproportionately experience negative life events, including poverty, victimization, abuse, and trauma. Complex trauma um it is found within the African American community due to trauma history in their families with multiple generations, affected by adversity of an invasive interpersonal nature such as poverty, physical abuse, sexual abuse, witnessing domestic and community violence, separation from family members, and revictimization by others. Mental health issues, substance use, the list just goes on and on. As well as negative contact from uh more with government agencies. Complex traumas usually begin in early childhood and can disrupt many aspects of development in the formation of one's sense of self. When we identify the definition of collective trauma, it refers to trauma that happens to large groups of individuals and can be transmitted trans-generationally and across communities. So war, genocide, slavery, terrorism, natural disasters can cause collective trauma, which can further be defined as historical, ancestral, or cultural. To the other two parts, it's like not enough trauma, right? Historical trauma um is referring to African Americans sharing public narratives of complex and collective traumas due to a long history of prejudice and unfavorable societal treatment of African Americans in the United States. These public narratives, which can be referred to as historical traumas, involve both shared historical experiences across generations, such as lynching, slavery, and present-day experiences such as police brutality and mass incarceration. These past and present-day experiences serve as reminders of the consistent dehumanization and devaluation of African Americans. Cultural trauma is often described as collective traumatic event, and that leaves permanent and enduring memories in the consciousness of an identified group as a whole. And this may have long-lasting adverse effects on the future identity of that group. I said earlier, I would mention what those barriers are, why one and three only seek treatment, and here we go. Number one right now is access to mental health care. I am a licensed mental health counselor. I am one person, right? And I am not only the chief clinical officer, but I carry a caseload of individual clients. I also uh carry a couple of groups that I do, as well as trying to provide supervision of all clinical services. And the reason why I do that, one, is because I feel it's important for me to stay involved, actively involved in treatment, but also because we're short vacancies everywhere, right? So these numbers are pretty interesting. 85% of Indiana's population, which is uh over 5.7 million Hoosiers, live in mental health professional shortage areas. Guess what? We're one of them. La Porte County is one of those. In 2020, only 7.7% of physicians in Indiana reported having a subspecialty in child psychiatry. Teeny, tiny amount. Also in 2020, 63.2% of licensed mental health physicians in Indiana were white. When I do want to do a comparison, uh, and this was something that Mr. Millsap and I had discussed, is how does our um staff reflect the needs of the community in terms of ethnicity? Right now, currently, we have out of our 95 employees, 18 of those um identify as black or African American, which is 18.9% of our staff identify uh as African American. It's higher than the representation of our county, which is 11.4%. So I feel that we are in a good place in terms of our representation of our community. We have males and females in both um direct service care as well as um administration and uh support staff roles and a nurse practitioner as well. So we have a diverse group um with it. So I feel like we, as an agency, are a little bit better than many in terms of representing our community. Socioeconomic disparities are another uh piece that can lead to a barrier to receiving mental health treatment. Um, really makes treatment options less available. Uh, in 2020, 10.4% of African American adults had no form of health insurance. Uh, Swanson Center accepts uh individuals regardless of payment. So we will work with them. We utilize a sliding scale. We will also apply for what we call presumptive eligibility for Medicaid in order to help individuals receive coverage and treatment. The African American community, like other communities of color, are more likely to experience socioeconomic disparities such as exclusion from health, educational, social, and economic resources, and these disparities may contribute to worse mental health outcomes. Stigma. It's Mental Health Awareness Month, so we're fighting stigma, right? This is really our uh our plot and our focus uh for May every year. Negative attitudes and beliefs towards people who live with mental health conditions is pervasive in the United States and can be particularly strong within the African American community. Although beliefs and attitudes vary, research shows that many African American adults, especially older adults, view mental health conditions as a consequence of personal weakness. And as a result, people may experience shame about having a mental illness and worry that they may be discriminated against due to their condition. For many in the African American community, it can be incredibly challenging to discuss the topic of mental health due to how they may be perceived by others. This fear could prevent them from seeking mental health care when they really need it. Additionally, many people choose to seek support from their faith community rather than seeking medical diagnoses. In many African American communities in the United States, the church, the mosque, or other faith institutions can play a central role in uh as a meeting place and source of strength. Faith and spirituality can help in the recovery process and be an important part of the treatment plan. Another barrier is provider bias and inequality of care. African American people have historically been negatively affected by prejudice and discrimination in the healthcare system in the United States. Unfortunately, many African American people still have these negative experiences when they attempt to seek treatment. Provide provider bias, both conscious and unconscious, and a lack of cultural competence, competency, sorry, can result in misdiagnosis and inadequate treatment. And this ultimately can lead to mistrust of mental health professionals and create a barrier for many to engage in treatment. African American people may also be more likely to identify and describe physical symptoms related to mental health problems. For example, they may describe body aches and pain um when talking about depression. And the healthcare provider who's not culturally competent might not recognize these symptoms of a mental health condition. And additionally, African American individuals are more likely to receive a misdiagnosis of schizophrenia when experiencing symptoms that are related to a mood disorder. So what do we do about it? And this is where we come into play in terms of the community as a community mental health center. What we need to do as, as treatment providers is incorporate individual strengths. And we do this by including family support, encouraging support from immediate and extended family of our clients. We also incorporate spirituality. Spirituality is identified as the one factor that often present that helps African Americans from following through with the suicidal attempt. So they have the suicidal ideation, and spirituality and faith is really the factor that has stopped individuals from following through those um thoughts. If we can incorporate our client's spiritual and or religious values into treatment as appropriate, the outcomes are much stronger. Oftentimes, and I say this, and I know we have um individuals that are pastors here, but African Americans often view the church as supportive family unit. And that remains important throughout the life cycle. So evidence suggests that spirituality often contributes to the resiliency of African Americans in navigating socially entrenched oppression and discrimination. Other studies have affirmed that African American millennials, so those new young folks, right? Are remain more spiritual and religious in comparison to millennials of other racial groups. And community in terms of uh incorporating individual strengths. If we can incorporate community involvement and engagement into treatment, there are better outcomes. African Americans are more likely to believe community involvement is important to their overall well-being compared with other ethnicities. Go back. Um, it also in terms of providers and treatment recommendations is recognizing provider bias. We need to be aware that some uh individuals have a bias that exists and try to identify it and address it appropriately. We also need to consider historical trauma, use validation and empowerment. For example, normalizing instead of pathologizing. We need to consider using utilizing narrative therapy, and this is a narrative approach. I always say I like to tell the story of an individual, right? It's not a checkbox. It's not, here are the symptoms, here's the criteria, we check those boxes. I want to know the narrative of that person. I want to know their story. And so when you use a narrative approach, it separates the problem from the people and recognizes that person's strengths, their skills, their abilities, their values, their commitments, their beliefs. And that helps those people individually change their relationship to the problem influencing their lives. This way of working actually um considers the broader context of a person's life and particularly the dimensions of diversity. In terms of what we can do as a community is to address and assess the social determinants of health and community needs. So there is a brief risk overview survey that is available that would be beneficial to utilize in our, our county, our community. We in the also the importance of nurturing trusted institutions within the community, so like the Boys and Girls Clubs, schools, barber shops, and centers of faith, and then facilitate partnerships and enhance roles of healthcare providers and community programs to increase the probability of implementation, implementation success. And then finally, encourage self-advocacy and increased healthcare engagement. Consider using technology, peer navigators, health coaches, to reach members of the community. Identify strengths, goals, and sustain well-being with the help of health coaches. So we have a unique uh component of community mental health is that individuals don't need to necessarily come to the office, we go to them. So we have individuals that are in the community, whether it be be peers or case managers. We also have home-based and community-based therapists that are going out to individuals to meet them where they're at. This has ab- absolutely had a positive response to individuals in terms of their treatment. And what I've listed here are some resources um and supports um specific to uh mental health and African American mental health. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. SAMSA is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, who provides grants, uh, research and support as well as programs. The Indiana Youth Institute, the Steve Fund, of course, 98 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, Black Mental Wellness, the S I W E Project, Beam, Black Mental Health Alliance, Mental Health America, and Ourselves Black. All of these are just a few of the resources that are available uh to provide additional support. Some of those are chats, some of it's just information to be able to provide to individuals um as well as connecting, excuse me, connecting individuals to African American providers. And there's some references. Any questions?
Thank you for sharing that information. It was a lot to digest, but thanks God, we have.
It was a lot to digest, but thanks God, we have the flyers so we can share it with our family members. Out of curiosity, you mentioned Homebase. How does that operate? Because a lot of people can't persuade their loved ones to go to the facility for all those reasons that you named. How does it operate?
So individuals who have Indiana Medicaid have a program that they could be eligible for. It's called MRO, or Medicaid Rehab Option, which covers home-based and community-based services. There's also another program called AMHH, which is another program that is in the community where we can provide, send out our staff to people's homes into the community to provide those services. And those are covered specifically under special Medicaid programs.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Katie?
I'm sorry, what is your name again?
My name is Katie Jaznuski.
Katie? The last name?
Jaznuski.
Thank you.
Peace on the agenda, Rev.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Katie?
I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna, I got it. How does drugs, how do drugs or the abuse of drugs impact suicide and mental health?
I like to think of mental health as the core.
Thank you.
So you have this behavior of addiction, right, which is also a mental health issue. But at the core of an addiction is mental health issues. And then at the core of mental health issues, oftentimes, as I spend a lot of time talking about trauma, is that underground or that rooted piece of trauma. So we often see that what addiction stems from is mental health issues. So generally, when someone has an addiction, there absolutely is a mental health issue that's going side by side with that.
And I'm just curious, what's the average age of individuals who come to the Swanson Center to seek help?
As I said, it varies. So we have specialties. So we have specialty programs. We have a child and adolescent program that is catered specifically to children and adolescents. We provide those services both in the office, at home, and in the schools. So we have Memorandums of Understanding with several different Laporte County school corporations. So we provide those services onsite in those schools. In terms of adults, 18, all the way up. And so we break those up into different divisions as well. Individuals who have a chronic mental illness, we treat them a little bit differently, more intense services, than we do for someone who comes in with anxiety and depression. And the reason being is that we want to make sure that we are focused on the right evidence-based treatment to provide to that individual. We also have two residential programs for individuals who have serious mental illness that can't function on their own or that require additional support or are transitioning from the state hospital that need to come back to our community. Because let's be honest, state hospitalizations used to be, when I first started working in the field 28 years ago, we would send people to the state hospital and they would be there forever and ever. That was a sentence, essentially, right? And now, when I send or gatekeep somebody to the state hospital, we're looking at three months, nine months. And then the idea is that they are rehabilitated and then transitioned back into the community. People can't take care of some of these individuals who have these serious mental illness. And so we have a very small group home, 12 beds for the entirety of Laporte County, and 15 beds for semi-independent living. So it's a very small amount of beds that we have allocated for that. But that is the limitation that we do have. We also have a maximum of 10 beds at the state hospital. You know how big our county is, right? The most that we can place somebody at a state hospital is 10 people. That's it. And so we rotate the sickest of the sick, essentially. Who's ready to come out? Who can we try to transition? Who has family support? Who can come to the group home where we can transition? Who can we move out of the group home so we have a space for this one? It's like a puzzle all the time. And so we are oftentimes doing a lot of puzzle work or transitioning, trying to incorporate as many local resources and supports that we can.
My last question will be, if a person seem like they are suffering from some kind of, they're seeking help and they come to the Swanson Center. If they don't have Medicaid or they don't have insurance, do you guys still provide service for them? And what is the, one of the things, when we talk about mental health in Michigan City and Laporte County, it seemed like when you go not just to the Swanson Center or even to a regular hospital, why does it take so long to do the intake to treatment?
So from the initial point of contact until treatment starts? Is that what you're asking? Yeah. So on one of the slides, I'd mentioned the healthcare shortage, right? So we do have what we call open access, where anybody can walk in Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 9 to 4, and they can initiate services. We have staff that will do what we call new client orientation. So we're gathering information. We're doing some screeners to see if there is an immediate need. We prioritize certain individuals based upon the scores of that PHQ9. So if they identify that they're suicidal, they're seen right away that day. We're doing a safety plan. We're assessing whether or not they need a higher level of intensity for services, meaning hospitalization, right? So that's one piece. And then, so priority is severity of symptoms. Another priority is any DCS referrals, so Department of Child Service referrals, have to be seen pronto. Any court referred in terms of treatment courts. So in Laporte County, we have five treatment courts, and those also take a priority because those are individuals that have very intense services that they are required to receive. And then we have individuals that if there are the severity of their symptoms, even if they're not suicidal, then we need to prioritize. We will do that. I currently have two individuals working full-time in Access. That's it. Out of the 95 people that we have employed by the Swanson Center, I have two that do intakes. And we are required by the state, by Department of Mental Health and Addiction, to obtain certain information. And it's a lot of information, right? So that intake, the time that we meet with somebody is about an hour. And it takes about an additional two hours to complete that full assessment. Then we staff it with a psychiatrist to determine what is the best plan of care. And then we contact that person to say, this is what we have available. For anybody that comes in, we do offer what we call a bridge group, which means we may not have an individual therapist per se, but we do have this group that you could come to every week and touch base with a therapist. And we offer that, that's been ongoing since we've opened Access. So that's always there. Anybody can drop in on that. In terms of your question about insurance coverage, as I said earlier, we do not deny anybody based upon insurance or lack thereof. We are required by the state to provide treatment to all residents of Laporte County or any resident of Laporte County, regardless of ability to pay. So when they present, we will assist them with what we call presumptive eligibility, which is an initial application for Medicaid if they are eligible. Or if they're not eligible, then we will place them on what's called a sliding scale, a sliding fee scale based upon their income.
Piggybacking off his question, once a family member does persuade that individual to come to Swanson Center for service, what documentation is needed to expedite the intake process?
Again, it goes back to that initial client orientation and what's identified on those screeners as to what is prioritized.
But I mean, driver's license, social security.
It was the information that's needed. An ID, proof of insurance, proof of income. If it's a child, then if there's guardianship involved, then we need that. That's it.
Okay. Is there any other questions by any other commissioner?
Yes, as a pastor in town, we've had discussions before. And it was also noted, many of the Blacks will never come into your facility. We had discussed maybe training pastors more because we do a lot of counseling on what we know from past or our experiences. Do you know of any thing that is happening now where that can be done? Or if not, could you get with me so I can stay on this so we can get trained?
So I was approached by someone of the faith community and asked about training for grief counseling. So I went through the certification in order to do that. And then we asked for it to continue, like, when can we meet? When can we do this? And I think individuals wanted to have some type of specific certification, which I can't certify someone. I can provide that education and that information. I'd be more than happy to do that. And that's part of our commitment to our community is to provide that education to individuals who need it, to utilize that to help others. Because I'm very transparent, as is the rest of our organization. We are a very small component of Laporte County. We will do whatever we can to help whomever we can, but we can't do it alone. And so we work in collaboration with a number of different agencies and supports to help meet the needs of Laporte County. There are other entities that provide counseling and support, and we work side by side with them in order to provide kind of piecemeal some of those services. So one might not be able to provide this, but another can provide that. And we try to work together in order to meet those needs. So I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you.
Mr. Millsap? Yes, Katie, once again, thank you. Could you acknowledge your team that you have from the Swanson Center?
Yes, I have our Director of Human Resources, Adrian Woodard, with us. And I also have our Director of our Foundation, Jenny Heath.
Hello.
Thank you and Swanson Center for helping our community.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now let's move on to our agenda. Can we, I will entertain a motion to accept and approve the minutes from April.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Ms. Benny on Treasury report, please.
Yes, I previously sent out the Treasury's report for the month of April. We have an ending balance of $2,350.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, let's get down to new business. And we are starting to get to a point where we have to, I'm gonna take more of initiative in this. We, the subcommittees need to start meeting. I'm gonna send out another request for each subcommittee. I'm gonna be present for all of them. We have to get this done. And I would like to make a recommendation to all those who head up their subcommittees. Try, at the very minimum, meet quarterly. And I'd just like to have everybody else's, anybody want to put any input on this? Because these subcommittees, we must meet. It's imperative. And I just think that I will send out something to get that done. But meeting quarterly should make this a lot more easier and let's get things done.
I'm in agreement with that. I think that we're in the month of May. So our next meeting will be June. We will be halfway through the month. Whoever, yeah, through the year, I'm sorry. Anybody that is or considers themselves wanting to be the chair of these subcommittees, you have to take the initiative to go ahead and get it set up so that we can at least be compliant with all of the subcommittees and then start presenting reports also. So I think quarterly meetings is very reasonable. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to make that happen.
Commissioner Benny, I want to thank you for coming to the Criminal Justice Subcommittee, but we didn't have a, we didn't have enough people there to do it. But I want to know, will you still make yourself available to show everybody how to do a quarterly report?
I will.
Thank you. Next, we need to discuss the new city ordinance that will be passed, I think, tonight. I want to let everybody know, if it's passed tonight, that we must take down our Facebook page. That's first thing first. There will be no more communicating through social media whatsoever as this group or any other board or commission. So I want, Madam Secretary, let you know that if it does pass, I will send you an email and then we will have to delete everything that we have on all the pages. So, and I can't remember, we had to, if there's any potential conflicts, you must report those as well. I don't have the gist of it all. Mr. Kalavich might talk about that later on. But is there any questions in regards to that? Seeing none? We have no old business?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
One of order.
Go ahead.
At our last meeting, we were discussing the request for a donation letter. So we can get that out. What's the status or can you?
Back to old business. I didn't know so. Me, you, Tony Cox, and Mr. Cox and Commissioner Benny, we need to sit down. Mr. Cox reached out to me. He would like for us to meet in a different location so we can talk about getting this done. And let's try to get it within the next 30 days before our next meeting. Is that okay with you, Mr. Cox?
I'll try to bring some examples of some donation letters at that time.
And anyone else that want to participate in that as well? Any other discussion on that? We're gonna go down to education, subcommittee reports, education. Anything to report? How about health?
I haven't anything to say. I'm trying to meet with Mr. Johnson, but I haven't. I haven't met with him yet, Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
So you're trying to get with him?
Yes.
I will make sure all this stuff gets straightened out. Anybody else for health? Employment?
Employment, we'll set up a quarterly meeting. I had a speaker for next month for employment if we don't have one.
That's fine with me. Criminal justice. Again, we are kind of like dropping a ball in that. I try to back away from that so someone else can pick up on it. We will have a, I will be calling for a subcommittee meeting here within the next 10 days and hopefully we can get some resolution to criminal justice. Social factors, Ms. Moore?
Once again. We too will try to set up a meeting before the next meeting. I try to contact the people that are on there that are not commissioners, and they've been having some personal issues. So we haven't been able to get a date together. So we will be setting up a meeting. I do, would like to make one, two announcements though. One, the Back to School Rally. The Back to School Rally date is August the 10th. In the past, the Social Satisfaction Commission did participate in the Back to School Rally. So it's Saturday, August the 10th, from 11 to 3 at Gilfield. So after, if we want to try to get together, what we're gonna do. So hopefully, when I get that meeting set up, we can discuss that at the meeting. And the other thing is there is a lady that's gonna be speaking at Michigan City Library this Saturday that is, used to own the Indianapolis Recorder newspaper. I have it here somewhere, the newspapers. And here it is. Okay, Eunice Trotter hails from a Black family with deep roots in Indiana, dating back to the late 1790s. And she served as the former owner of the Indianapolis Recorder, one of the oldest African American newspapers in the country. Additionally, she was the first African American editor at the Indianapolis Star and held positions at several other newspapers with numerous reporting and writing awards under her belt. She was inducted into the Indiana Journalism Hall of Fame in 2017. And she has a book called Black in Indiana, which showcases her commitment to preserving Black heritage. Currently, she serves as a Director of the Indiana Landmark Black Heritage Persevation Program, where she passionately undercovers documents and safeguards Black heritage across the state. Ms. Trotter involvement through Advancing Racial Equality Grant provided by the Indiana Humanities. She is, she will be at the Michigan City Library, May 11th, from 2 to 3, and be talking about Black heritage in Indiana.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. We are now ready for public comments. Reminder, there's definitely a three-minute limit today. Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. Wants to continue us to pray for peace in Israel and Gaza. Especially, I know we all got loved ones that we all sent off to college. Want to just call for all the end of the unrest and all the demonstrations and all the encampments that are going on at our college campuses around the country. Just want to put a stop to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Thank you.